Okay, I'd like to call and order the joint Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority meeting of October 15th, 2013, commencing at 4:36. May we have a roll call for the city council?
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here.
And for the Housing Authority?
Authority members, Friedman.
Here.
Nancy.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Rosian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Sananian.
Here.
Okay, may we have your report?
Agenda for the October 15th, 2013, joint public meeting of the city council and housing authority was postponed on Thursday, October 10th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you.
Item for you today, the number one item is public hearing Director of Community Development regarding Housing Element 2014 through 2021. A, at 1A is council resolution adopting the Housing Element, and 1B is authority resolution adopting the Housing Element.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it before I forget and the city attorney tells me. With that, I'll go to Mr. Cho, who's gonna go to?
I'll go to our principal planner, Laura Stotler, to introduce what is actually a very brief presentation despite the very expansive body of work and that it is our Housing Element, one of the seven elements of our general plan, one that has to be updated on a regular basis. And if we do it as conscientiously as we have in the past, we would be certified for effectively an eight-year term versus the four-year term. You'll see a number of items that you are very familiar with, ranging from the addressing of our RENA numbers to housing programs, housing objectives that we have met, and ultimately a strong report card for Glendale.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Weaver. Council members, Housing Authority, this will be very brief. A quick overview of a Housing Element, not only for you but also for people who may be viewing it, is part of our general plan, as was mentioned, and the basis of it is our regional housing needs. We're developing a policy to meet the regional housing needs in Glendale, and if Glendale meets our regional housing needs, and as do other cities in our region, we will be able to accommodate growth for the next eight years. Our Housing Element needs to accommodate all segments of our community, and we have to identify goals and policies to meet those housing needs. And finally, we also need to have certification from the state Housing and Community Development Department. That certification allows us to be eligible for future funding for things such as housing programs, transportation, we have other discretionary projects which also have a string that's tied to having a certified Housing Element, such as some of the library funding. We also want to have consistency with regional plans to make us eligible for some of the funding that comes through SCAG. So that would be the regional transportation plans, sustainable communities programs, as well as some other funding that may be eligible for RENA. The accomplishments that we've done since 2008 have included construction of 2,500 new dwelling units at a variety of income levels. Almost half of those have been at affordable levels, so it is quite an accomplishment for Glendale. We've also adopted policies for priority service for affordable housing units, for, that's utility services. We did an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and you actually implemented every requirement related to zoning for improving our fair housing choice. We have a reasonable accommodation ordinance that we've adopted that has been copied by other cities. We've also adopted all the housing definitions that were programs directed at the previous Housing Element. We've had a variety of public, private, affordable housing partnerships that we've done in the city. In terms of our update, we've actually dropped our regional housing need requirement. Before, it was over 3,000 units, now it's right at 2,000 units. This provides the outline of what the actual breakdown is for the number of units that we need to construct. And again, the RENA numbers for new construction, we don't actually have to construct those units, we just have to show that we have zoning available to allow those units to be constructed. These are the same program strategies that we had before, we're not proposing a change in them, these were under the previous amendment, as well as the current program strategies form the basis in which we have our housing programs to implement them. The reason we've had some changes in our programs have been mostly related to the changes that have occurred from the outside affecting us, such as we've had a loss in population between 2010 census and the 2010 census, as well as reduction in funding from outside sources for housing, state and federal. For housing programs, I'd like to highlight, we still retain our code enforcement program, Neighborhood Target Areas, that's a requirement for receiving some of our CBPG monies. We have a density bonus program required by the state. We also allow density bonus through our own zoning code, that's an addition. A Section 8 rental housing voucher program that would remain in place. We're also looking at expanding it to create a small lot subdivision. That is a preferred priority by HUD, so we would be adopting their program for that. We have care management services, homeless services, fair housing program, again, that's continuation of what we're already doing. We're looking at completing our Glendale, our South Glendale Community Plan, that would be furthering some of our general plan goals, and this would mirror some of the efforts that we've done in North Glendale. We would also have transit-oriented development housing programs, implementing the study that's being done by Metro right now in the Tropical Neighborhood. And we would be looking potentially at expanding our Greener Glendale program to include a climate adaptation plan, should funding become available for that. Because these tech, these changes are essentially technical, related to change in our population as well as reductions in funding from outside sources, and we're prepared an addendum to the negative declaration that was prepared before, and that is included in your packet. A recommendation, as well as planning commission's recommendation, as the council approved this Housing Element as prepared before you, I would also like to acknowledge that this document was completely prepared by staff. Staff from Community Development, I'd like to acknowledge Anne Bach and Kim, and Peter Zovak, we have Jeff Hamilton, Kathy Duarte, and Moises Correio, as well as many of El Zuela who all worked on this. So that concludes staff's presentation, we're here to answer questions.
And really, just to underscore that point, that we are, our staff is being much too modest on that. Many cities will spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, literally, but on their housing element, bringing in outside experts. Laura was the tip of the spear in pushing this project forward, so it's something that she should be commended for, most definitely.
Good morning. Well, I have no cause, I'll close the public hearing. Comments by anybody, or a motion? Mr. Najarian?
Comments. Laura, you're doing a great job, and I don't want anything that I'm saying to disturb you, or Anne, or Tim, or Hassan, or anyone in any way. But, I read through this, and I do have some comments. Some may see them as rather sharp comments, but first, I'd like to say that when we get a draft, we get that it's a draft. It was very difficult to read this document with draft on every page, in many ways obscuring the underlying writing. Some may feel that that's unintentionally, others may think it's just a printing issue, but it was very hard for me, and I really wanted to go through this, to understand and to read what was obscured by the words "draft" on each and every page of the actual Housing So, these are my comments. Wow, we hit our RENA numbers, like, immediately. It's an eight-year plan, and we're supposed to put in 2,000 units, and I'll be darned, we probably hit that first. Do we get a prize for that? I mean, we have a lot of units, and in fact, we will. Is it safe to say that there's no worry that Glendale is gonna meet its RENA number, not just in zoning, but in actual units constructed, maybe within the first year?
It would be nice if we could meet our RENA number, but unfortunately, the RENA number is not only the number of units, but also the affordability level. So whether or not we can meet all those affordability levels, that's, remains to be seen.
Correct. But in terms of the number of units, the 2017 units, we're pretty much there. Now, only half of those are supposed to be market, 980-some market, the rest are various levels of low income. So we're really not hitting the low-income targets very well, and that's perhaps a market, a marketplace issue we need to deal with. In my opinion, we have way too many apartments, where one of our goals, and one of the goals stated, is to increase opportunities for homeownership. This council and staff has done nothing to encourage and cajole all those apartments that are being built to become condominiums and homeownership. And I'm not sure whose fault that is, I don't want to lay fault on anyone, but we're certainly, I would say, turning our back on that goal. Several years ago, one of the big problems, and one of the big issues that this community raised is that we are becoming an overwhelmingly apartmentized city, where actual homeownership had dipped below 50%, and there was a large push to get homeownership, and homeownership means a lot of things. It means pride of ownership, it means commitment and investment, and becoming a stakeholder in the city. I see with these thousands of units coming on, we are moving away from that, and that may be something that we may never, just by the sheer number of units coming online, we may never be able to achieve that. And I think Glendale loses. I think Glendale loses something when we become an overwhelmingly apartmentized, short-term, in many cases, a short-term residential community, and I'm, that concerns me a lot. The other thing that concerns me is the rents that these units are demanding, and that they're asking for. Excessively high rents, perhaps spearheaded by the Americana. When Rick Caruso came in and said, "I'm charging $3 per square foot," everyone thought, "Well, that's kinda crazy," but lo and behold, he got pretty much near that, and it led to a prospecting boom, if you will, that these are rents that are the market rents now in Glendale, and that someone who had a project which was otherwise not gonna be feasible at the, some of the other rents that we had, that you actually show in your report, the range of rents, now you boost that up to close to the $3 a square foot, and I'm not kidding, it's about $3 a square foot. Go to the ALIVE, the Elevate, and something about 800 or 700 square feet is asking $2,300,[711.12][711.12]$2,400 a month. I think that's creating a problem for us and the housing in Glendale, that we're pricing people out of the market, and will those units ever be rented? I don't know. But there's certainly a very high level of rents. I think we need to do something about that. You know, the, I guess the counter to that, to the homeownership, is we're starting with the small lot subdivision, that's certainly got a ways to go. It hasn't come before us in any firm, in any firm form, although we like the idea, it's really not gonna come anywhere close to, to offsetting the huge number of rentals that we have. Some of the other issues that I have are the, and let me refer you specifically to page 14 of chapter two, where they talk about the density bonus. And I was not aware of this, but at the top, it says that someone who applies for density bonus can get that. However, they have to prove, if staff shows that they don't need that density bonus to have a feasible project, then they do not get that density bonus. And I will, I will represent that at no time before, in front of us, with any of these other units asking for density bonus, we're not talking about SB 1818, that's statutory, but at no time was I made aware, or was the question even brought to me, that this person's asking for a density bonus based on either the setbacks, or the interior open space, or the green, the leads, the leads issues? Not once was it brought to us, the policymaking, decision-making body, that, you know, there's a question here. If this project can go forward without the extra density, you don't have to award them that density bonus. Now unless I'm reading your-
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
I'm-
14.
Page 14.
14, is it 34?
Chapter what?
Chapter two.
Chapter two?
At the very top. It says, "Unless the city proves the incentives are not necessary to make the project feasible."
Let me address that.
So, I mean, that's what the report says, and I know it has never come before us, and I want to know why that issue never came before us, to at least look into that. At no point were any of the pro formas, any of these projects really before us, whether it was a feasible project or a profitable project. I also want to talk about doing away with the density bonus altogether, or make it more, impose a greater performance levels to achieve the density bonus. I think a lot of developers have just come in, they've done this, whether it's the leads, the open space, boom, you get the density bonus, and your project goes from a value of X million dollars to X plus Y million dollars, and it's been coming through like crazy. And I think it's our city, and it's our planning, and it's our downtown that we're, that we're planning essentially. I think it's time for us to tighten that up. Let's get more affordable housing. Let's get greater leads, let's get greater open space, to give them that density bonus, because just by sheer numbers, they're, they're buying that density bonus, you know, all day long. And that tells me that we're not at an equilibrium, that we're giving away too much. Let me also go to the discussion of the, it's 6.1.8, the Parks Library, Park Library and Urban Art Impact Fees. It seems to me that this discussion is incomplete, when the only analysis that we put forth is that compared to other cities, our fees are not excessive, they're in line with other cities. Well, that's not the analysis that should be mentioned in our Housing Element. Our Housing Element should say, by the way, we are an underparked city, and the reports that were done indicate that it shouldn't be a $10,000 per unit fee, starting January 1st, 2014. The true impact of each additional unit should be a, excuse me, what's the number? $15,000, or $16,000. Now, why isn't that included in our Parks Impact Fee? The impression is that as long as we're not higher than Pasadena, or Burbank, or Santa Clara, or whoever it is, then we're okay. Well, that disguises and glosses over the true impact that additional housing has. The impression is that the current fees are adequate, and they are not adequate by our own study. It should be included in there, and I didn't see that at all, but that was the Kaiser Marston comments that I referred to. So these are all problems I have with this, and I don't want this to be a pro forma. We've done some great things, we've done some great affordable units, but that money has dried up since redevelopment, so there's no way we can look forward to the next eight years and believe that we can come anywhere close to meeting all those hundreds of units, good work that we did in providing those low-income units to the public. This is why we need to tighten up that density bonus. This is why we've got to address all these issues before us, and I'm, for those reasons, I am not gonna vote for this Housing Element. And I think it need, unless these issues are addressed, and addressed in a meaningful way.
Would you like us to address those?
Could I-
Because we certainly can. And at the end of the day, this is a policy document-
It's a draft.
It's a, well, it's a draft and-
I got that. It's a draft. There was no doubt in my mind that this was a draft. I would like that to be addressed when a more final version comes. Am I ready to address them now?
This is the item, no, we can address them now, if you like, because if-
First, I would like to address a couple of the items that Mr. Najarian mentioned. I've talked to every single developer that has come into this town, and I said, "Are you building your apartments to condo standards?" "Yes." And I said, "So when the market turns in condos, you're gonna be selling these?" Answer, "Yes." So they will become homeownership. I also, what was the other one I wrote down? Oh, the leases that they're charging. I said, "They're all extremely high. How do you expect to fill these? If you don't get them, it's supply and demand. Will you be dropping the rents or the leases until you get the medium where you can rent?" The answer every time was, "Yes." So those two questions at least were answered in my mind. They're building them, I can't wait to see them, fill them all out. I bet you they'll drop the rents. And when the condo market turns, I've seen this cycle in 17 years, condos were the rage all over the place, and it dried up. It'll turn around and come again, I don't know when. And impact fees, Mr. Cantara, I remember, we had a long discussion, impact fees, and there's a lot of controversy about how much we should be giving, and we settle on this, it's too low, well, we can change that. We can have it brought back to council and discuss it again, but that was very controversial in how much we should charge. Was I right? You remember that way? No, you don't? Oh, you're like me, getting old.
I remember we discussed it for many, many meetings, and ultimately decided on a number that, that would work.
But nothing, it's not set in stone, I can always change. Other questions? I don't have an answer to.
Well, I may be able to address, or at least clarify, some of the issues with density bonus. We actually have multiple types of density bonus. We offer a 90-foot one, that's a by right density bonus, if you have a 90 feet of frontage. The idea a while back, when they adopted that, was to basically stop getting those widows and orphans, where somebody would come in and develop on two lots and not develop on one lot, and leave one lot in the middle between two developments. And you'd have a single-family home in a multifamily area, then you'd have an apartment complex, then you'd have another single-family home and an apartment complex. In order to encourage these bigger units essentially, and stop that piecemeal, single lots being left behind, the city did adopt a 90-foot incentive, and what they did was it was a density bonus. And if you look at by right, under our code, if you're in the R-1250 zone, you get one lot for every 1250 square feet of lot area that you have. However, if you have over 90 feet of frontage, then you have one unit per 1,000 square feet, that's your, that's your density bonus. So that's one sort, and that is accommodated in the code, it is by right. The one where you do have a call on discretion has to do with the SB 1818. And there is a provision in SB 18 that gives you density bonus above and beyond the base density. So if you're in the R-1250 zone, you have over 90 feet, your base density is 1,000 square feet per unit. So if you have a 1,500 square, or 15,000 square feet lot, you get 15 units, that would be your base density. For a density bonus, that would be with your density bonus. You would already get the density bonus because of the fact you have a 90 feet. If you come in and say, "I'm gonna make a certain 10% of those units affordable," you can get up another 20, you can get essentially more units on your lot, you can get actually an additional three units if you get a 20% density bonus, brings you up to 18 units that you can get. But that extra three units, that 20, that extra 20%, that falls under a SB 1818, and that is one, to get any kind of waivers to allow that to occur, they have to prove that they need the, that they would need to have those waivers in order to make it affordable. They don't necessarily have to prove that they need the additional density to make the project work, but it's the waivers that they need, it's that, the waiver, that's where we have the discretion, and the waiver is what makes it, the ability that we can say, "Well, we're not, we don't think that waiver is necessary to make it affordable." But frankly, we know that those waivers really are necessary. Generally, people do come in for waivers, there are things that make a lot of sense, if they don't meet the code, they're not able to get that extra density if they don't have the waiver. The most common waiver we see on things that are 90 feet in width is they want a relaxation from the setbacks from the open space requirement. You've seen that on almost every project that comes through for, for affordable development. So I know you've seen those, they've all come before you, and they have a good argument, they generally need those to make it affordable. So that's the second type of density bonus, the 1818. In downtown, you also really have density bonuses that you can get because of actual density. I mean, the downtown specific plan provides different findings for you. So, you're right, that section might need to be rewritten, we can certainly take a look at it and draft some new language, but just understand that there really are different types of density bonus, and it really depends on individual site characteristics and locations of which one would be appropriate. In terms of amending that section 6.1.8, we can certainly add more language to that about the arts and arts, parks and arts fee, and write in the fact that it's true, we set a fee that's less than what we actually need to meet the need, and we set the fee that we felt was affordable at the time, it's a compromise. It's not ideal, it's a development fee where we get money toward improving the situation, but you're right, it doesn't solve it.
If I can just add a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor, members of council. With respect to SB 1818, and specifically the language dealing with incentives, Government Code, Section 65915, which is essentially SB 1818, is very developer favorable, meaning that the incentives are mandatory unless the city has the, can show, meet its burden to show that they're not necessary. And if the city denies an incentive, and is found by court to unlawfully deny that incentive, then the city will be responsible for the attorneys' fees of the developer. So on that, for that reason, it's very rare we're gonna find that the city is gonna, when they come in for one of those mandated incentives, which are different than the waivers, because they do need, when they're getting the additional density, and they're gonna put that, they need that particular incentive, and Laura's right, that's usually the, the open space within the setback is usually one of the, one of the most commonly used incentives. If they can show, if they need that to physically fit all the units on the site and provide the affordable housing, the city's, in most cases, not, just not gonna have a basis to stand on. So in essence, with respect to the incentives, essentially, I'm not aware of any instance where we've had any cause to question whether or not that incentive is necessary. With respect to the additional waivers that a developer may request, those have to do with a specific need to ask for an additional waiver of an additional requirement because they need it to get the units on site. But again, the statute is written in a way that if they, with the density bonus they get, for example, they would have been entitled to 100 units, and now they're entitled to 120 units, they, the city's gotta find a way to help them get those 120 units on the site. And so that's, that's gonna be the overarching concern that a court's gonna look at with respect to those particular issues. With respect to the Parks Impact Fee, the only thing I will note is that this is a, the section that it's in is, relates to the constraints to developing housing, and specifically to developing affordable housing within the city. So HCD, who looks, will look at all of our, all of our fees, they'll look at, is that a constraint? And they'll want us to address it, and how much is a constraint? So, the analysis, in my view, is appropriate to say, you know, comparison to other jurisdictions in the surrounding area, it is less. It's primarily focused on what, what is the, are our fees, how do they act as a constraint on developing housing within the city? And so in my view, it's entirely appropriate to say, "Well, we don't think it does, and here's why," because when you compare it to Pasadena and Burbank, we are substantially less, or, you know, whatever the analysis may say. So, it's sort of, it's counterintuitive, in my view, to then go ahead and in your housing constraints analysis, to say, "But we're gonna increase it, or we're considering increasing," because one, we haven't done that, and two, it's not really an analysis of what the impacts of housing on our parks, it's what the impacts of the park impact fee are on our housing opportunities in Glendale. And so that's why it's written that way. And then, I was gonna mention the point, similar point that Mr. Weaver already raised, which is, I am aware as well that a lot of these projects are built to condo standards and, but for the Great Recession in 2007, a lot of these projects would have been built as condos, but didn't. Our only obligation is to provide the opportunities to develop the projects that can be built for, for ownership or rental housing. I'm not aware, or I'd be increasingly skeptical of a regulatory regime in which we disfavor rental over ownership. In other words, we used that ownership versus rental as a basis to deny a project. I just don't know how we would be able to do that. All we can do is provide those opportunities to build both homeownership and rental, and I think that we do that here in the city. So with that, I'll, those are the points I wanted to address with respect to those items.
I just want to throw one point out, unless I trap myself. I think there is one complex that's yet to get our approval and do anything with, where I asked them, and they're gonna remain apartments. So, it's not, it'll be designed at condo standards, but it will stay apartments. It hasn't been approved by us yet. Mr.-
So if we approve this, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if we approve this report today, can we revisit the issue of these impact fees, the-
Sure.
We are bringing that back to you, I wanna say, next month?
November, yes, that's already on your agenda.
So this approval doesn't, because I think it is worth looking at those.
Yeah, amounts, no, the council's directed, and we are bringing that back to you this fall.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And by the way, if we do look at those, and maybe I'm getting ahead of the game, we have the authority to consider whether those projects that have moved forward are grandfathered in, or are they going to be subject to the new-
Grandfathered.
Well, you have discretion as to-
We have discretion as to-
Except for a project that has a building permit, I mean, anything else, you would have the discretion to dis-
Okay.
But if they're in various stages of design review, would have you the council. My only point would have been that the council gets to, the council makes a great deal of policy, just like you saw with the first item in today's agenda. What you wanna build, what this place looks like, is incumbent on, in this case, the seven of you, but in other cases, the five of you. And so to the extent that you would increase those fees, and that would have an impact, resulting impact on development and investment, that's entirely council's-
Anything under construction or building permits, they're grandfathered?
You did previously, as an example, was if they were already in design review, you gave them six- gave them six months. In six months, this would go into effect. You can do that, you cannot do that. You get to make that policy.
Okay, if there's no further comments, is there a motion for the council at 1A?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Onion?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, and 1B for the authority.
So moved.
For a second?
I can't say.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Authority members, Friedman?
Yes.
Ince?
Yes.
Garian?
No.
Brazian?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Harrisoni?
Yes.
Okay, is a motion adjourned for council?
So moved.
Second.
Adjourned for authority?
Adjourned.
So, standard adjourned at 5:07 PM.